I'm calling this school board meeting to order. It is a committee of the whole, a special committee of the whole meeting that we are having today. It is Tuesday, May 30th. And I'm going to turn to Clerk Sedowski and she's going to take role.
All right, Member Eden.
Present.
Member Kirby.
Here.
Member Lafferty Kim.
Yes. And you can just call me Grandma.
Yeah, there you go.
I had to do it.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Member Lowell.
Here.
Member Oswald is excused, I am here, Member Sandholm.
Present.
Superintendent Magus.
Present and accounted for.
Assistant Superintendent Bahn.
Present.
Deputy Clerk Zunich.
Present.
And HR Operations Director Teresa Sevins.
Thank you, Member Clerk Oswald. And again, we are the Committee of the Whole, the Duluth School Board. It is Tuesday, May 30th. And we have, you know, basically two items on our agenda today. If you look at our board book, it is number three, Proposed FY 2024 Update, and then an ESSAR update. And so for all of this meeting tonight, it is going to be led by predominantly Superintendent Magus, Assistant Superintendent Bonds, Director of Finance Zunich, and HR Director Severance. So I'm going to turn it over to... Who wants to start this of the four leaders?
I can start it briefly and...
Okay.
So we appreciate that our board is very, very supportive and also wants to hold us and the district accountable for financial resources and really have a deep understanding of what it is that we're spending our money on. With a budget of over a million, or two, or I'm sorry, with a budget over 100 million a year, considerably over 100 million a year, it's important that we spend those taxpayer resources wisely. And we also have the moral obligation of making sure that we're putting our resources towards what matters most. And I think if there's anything that Executive Director Zunich has tried to do in the recent year that she's been working in her current role is really to have a high level of transparency, a high level of clarity related to everything we do. And upon, you know, hearing about some of the additional board member thoughts and wonderings, we wanted to offer this as an additional opportunity to learn about where we're at budget-wise. It's an important time for budget because we're transitioning off of our ESSAR spending. We also have some new monies coming in from the state. And just to get a good picture of where we're at and where we're going. I would also say that I've been very impressed with a lot of the budget forecast work that this fund has done. It's new to the district, the software we're using and the approach we're using. I think it gives us a much clearer perspective of where we're going. So I know that Executive Director Severance and Assistant Superintendent Bonds might have things to add, but for the most part, this is Executive Director Zunich's role in the meeting. And I might flip one of those little lights as we present here in the conference room. I can grab it. So go ahead.
Okay. Shannon, you're going to start with the, this page here, the first page, or page two. We have... It sounds like this. So I think that was the other handout, there's another, there you go. That's like... Okay? We have page numbers, I'm very excited about that.
We are too.
And we have fixed where the product that got loaded into board book last week was kind of wonky, so we straightened those up and have nice straight sheets for you now, too. So we're going to start with page two of our ESSAR budget. This is a preliminary conversation tonight. I will take one more deep dive into this before I bring it to HR Finance on June 6th, but, excuse me, June 13th. And, but I'm sure that this will be our final product, but I will, you know, just so I can sleep at night, I'm going to take one more hard look at it. So this is our preliminary proposed budget for FY '24. And I spoke with my predecessor this weekend, and she knows that I loosely followed her format from last year. And so I'm just going to do some overview and definitions first, so everyone understands that the general fund includes our General Fund One, Transportation and Operating Capital. Within the General and Operating Capital Funds, certain revenues will have reserve requirements, and we'll get to those. Additional funds include Food Service, which is Fund Two, Community Service Fund Four, Construction Fund Six, Debt Service Seven, Trust Fund Eight, and Internal Service Fund Twenty. The process for General Fund revenue budgeting will include projecting and analyzing current federal, state, and local revenues, along with forecasting legislative or local district changes to revenues. I am excited about our new product, our analytics product, because we were able to enter all this, did a lot of calculations, and it was also helpful to, for our five-year plan, for a good projection as well. And it felt, with a district this size, I like having another set of eyes on our numbers, so it helps with that. And also with our financial five-year plan, we'll have another third set of eyes with Baird when they come up. The plan is for them to come up and explain our five-year plan to you on, at the Cow Meeting on June 15th, Thursday. So we're going to have, we're having three sets of eyes on this product, so I feel safe that we are capturing all the information. The review of the budget provisions for FY '24. Our goal is to strive for fiscal stability and sustainability for our future years. We will continue to strive for fund balance growth to meet our district policy of 8% of general fund expenses. This year, our FY '24, we will utilize our ESSAR and land sale funds to help stabilize our FY '24 budget. Our local levy dropped 2.9 million due to LTFM adjustments. That's very common. If we had projects three years ago that we said we were going to do, they didn't get done, we know we had supply chain issues, so they make adjustments in our levy. Those can come back to us in years down the road. We just have to kind of go with that every year. Our state aid increase went up 44% of 3,707 in Special Education Cross-Subsidy Aid and a Basic Formula Allowance increase of 2,707. Assigned fund balance transfer, excuse me, and I will discuss this in more detail as we go into the budget. But right now, we have a tentative plan to move our land sale funds to an assigned fund balance and then to utilize up to 2 million a year to offset technology purchases. We can only use land sale capital gains to offset technology or curriculum. We can't use it for staffing. Inside the budget...
Tell me, say that word again, land?
Our land sale.
Land sale?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'm trying to be transparent about that to our public as well, that we've got the money sitting there, we're going to put it in an assigned fund balance and then utilize it. At the end of every year, we can make a $2 million transfer out of there. I'm saying 2 million, it might be 1.5 million to offset technology purchases.
So basically, two land sales, two property sales that have taken place in that year.
Yes, and HOX was two years ago, in the 21, 22, and I'll be able to show that to you.
But that money's still been sitting there, right?
That is correct, yes. We were unsure if we were going to need some of that HOX sale money for our new DSC building, so right now, we haven't touched it because we're not sure, you know, we weren't sure if we needed it or not. But that was the original intent when that was done.
Is 2 million dollars the maximum amount?
No, we can do whatever we want, to be honest with you. I hope it, I hope we can use a little less of it, to be honest, and then we can kind of pull on having that savings account. But I'll show that to you, I'll show that information to you.
So from a bigger picture perspective, we had technology needs as a district, and they know the district tried to go forward with a, with a technology levy. I had a referendum question previously that wasn't successful, but then when it went pandemic and we didn't have any laptops or notebooks for the kids, we made that investment, we made that step into technology, but we also knew that we didn't have replacement funds that we need to keep that technology budget going. And so we have a temporary fix with using some of the property sale money, but I think it's important for us to think about how do we sustain that need ongoing?
Oh, just a comment on your comments, and so I'm glad that amount or close to that amount is in there, because we know even though the referendum question did not go through, it had a lot of community support.
Yes.
For the technology.
Correct. And we just, as Superintendent Magus knows, we understand that we have to come up with a long-term solution as replacement cycles for our technology. And this land sale is just giving us, using this 2 million dollar transfer gives us some time to come up with a smart, useful, and responsible plan to rotate that technology.
That's correct.
It's a temporary fix, yeah.
How many years is this sustainable?
Well, we have 7.8 million to work with, so read and have.
Sure.
If we use it all.
And I'm already, and I will present that too, but I already have a proposal to perhaps do a transfer this year in FY '23. But I will show that to you, and then we can talk about it. Okay?
I think we also, in our meeting on the 15th, our Committee of the Whole meeting, we're going to have that presentation from Baird, talking about where we're at from a financial perspective as far as potential, maybe a referendum at that point where some of these questions do. And some of the things I'm pointing out are as much just to make sure that our public is understanding the context. I know all of you have been steeped in the background of all this for a long time.
Okay. Within the budget, I have also, for FY '24, embedded a half, $500,000 budget amount for programming, because we know our elementary school will be changing their programming. We will have a slight decrease in our title funding next year of 5.6%, which is roughly We will be looking to backfill that amount next year, but that will be the last year with some ESSAR funds.
Why are we losing title?
You know, we've gotten so much money in our grants. They, they have tightened up title for everybody, it's not just us. So, you know, they're looking, it's the formula they're looking at, and hopefully, it won't happen the year after. But right now, we thought it was going to be a 10% decrease, but it came in at 5.6%. Our library aid increase is at $140,774. Our American Indian Education aid increased by $104,000. Our student support personnel aid, a little bit new, is $104,000. And our English learner revenue increase is of $19,000. We don't get a lot of money for EL, for English learners, so that doesn't bring it up too much, but... Okay, at the, at the end of every page, I'll open it up to any questions, additional questions, before I move on?
Just one comment on the library aid, and I know we've seen a few emails with people saying, this is great, we can fund a librarian in every school. $140,000 would be about 1.4 librarians as opposed to having it one free school. But we have had conversations, I know Member Sandholm talked about how maybe we could use some of this funding to look at refilling a couple of the secondary provisions that we had had to cut in previous years, so we're looking at that. Also how that might help us with some of the, some of the digital innovation specialist support that needs to be done. So it's kind of, we can take care of both at the same, you know, killing two birds with one stone with that $140,000. It would require some investment in the district as well.
And I began those discussions last week, Friday, with Cindy Miller, who is our library specialist for the district. So we've already started some discussion on how we can use those monies to support additional FTE throughout the district in library media, as well as had some initial discussion regarding supporting some of the gaps that might exist in our digital innovation specialist reductions.
So if you look at library aid and American Indian Education Aid and Student Support Personnel Aid, which I think is things like social worker counselors...
Well, I have, I actually have a description of it that I can read to you.
While you look for that, my question would just be, do all of these go into like our general fund and then we spend them and we have to report to MDE exactly what we use this for? Or do you have to use it and then get reimbursed for it?
These are, this is all aid, so we spend it and we report it to MDE via our budget codes. That is a requirement, part of the audit.
And then they send us the money, or they send us the money anyway?
They send us the money anyway.
And if we didn't use it in the right way, they would scold us and take it away?
Yes, if it's a restricted fund, you get to keep it and roll it over and put it into our fund balance. But I will, I will get, I'll talk about that a little bit more.
Yeah, tell us a little bit about what student support personnel aid is.
Yeah, so districts must use the funding to hire student support personnel, increase the less, less than 1.0, or make terminate a position hired using CARES Act funding. But basically, it sounds like a contract for services if a district cannot hire a new full-time employee with the student support personnel aid. I've never heard of this, this is new.
Yeah, I know, yeah. I've heard it.
So it's, I am attending a legislative update tomorrow with Kathy Erickson, and I will, I'm going to ask that question. It's, it's new. Because they talk about intermediate districts and stuff like that. For intermediate school districts and other cooperative sites, so I might know better.
And that's what it is, that's special education. Usually, if we don't have enough speech pathologists in the district, we're able to contract some of the services out, you know, with other agencies at least, that's what they're doing.
And I think both, like, like many other districts, Duluth is, is taking a look at what these funds will mean for us and then also thinking privately about how can we apply these funds. So people haven't figured out exactly what each, each dollar will be spent on yet, but of course, it's intended for, for good cause and we'll make that clear as we go forward. And I would also say that some of the legislative work that went forward this, this year, because we've been somewhat progressive, we've already taken care of some things like the comp ed. There was a push for more comp ed at the site, and then also another one was the Juneteenth holiday, that is considered a tier-one holiday, similar to Christmas or Thanksgiving or things like that. And so it's, it's a data upon which nobody could work with. Months ago, you made that a holiday, so I think some districts are scrambling around even more than we are.
So just for clarity then, the four aid increases at the bottom of page two, library, American Indian Education Support, so these are all state aid that's come out of the legislative session?
That is correct.
Additional aid that's come out of the legislative session, yes. And then honestly, some of the, I mean, I have, I must have 25 pages of notes here. Some of it, they just give us a dollar amount, but there isn't a lot of description yet. So I'm hoping when I attend a session tomorrow, I'm going to ask some more detailed questions for us, okay? All right, if you want to go to page three. Our basic FY '24 formula allowance is 7,138 per pupil. This includes a 4% increase based on the 2023 legislation. Our, now, the pupil counts we budgeted for and that are sitting at MDE are budgeted at 7,989, which is a very slight increase in '24 over the '23 budgeted enrollment of 7985. We're keeping it very conservative. I don't want to come in and budget 50 or 100 more students than we really get. So I'd rather come back to next year in the spring and revise the budget and say, hey, we've got 50 or 100 more students, our basic revenue will go up. So this is the estimate that is down at MDE as well. I am being very conservative with our enrollment estimates for the next five years. If we get more, great for us.
Simone, can you just remind us all again what the per pupil is for, the current per pupil is?
The amount, the dollar amount?
Yes.
Is 7,138 per pupil.
That looks like it's for next year.
That's, that's...
For FY '24.
Yeah, I meant the current, the current.
Yes, and I have that number here, it's 6,000... I'll find it for you. It's a, it's a little over...
It's like 68, 89 or something.
It's 6,000 something. Yeah, I'll get that number for you. Okay.
I'm just questioning the, I mean, I understand you're like conservative on your Google accounts as you propose a budget like this, but it just seems low. I mean, what are our numbers now? Which we just came out with.
We're over 8,000.
Yeah, well, we're over 8,000.
Yes, but, come on, now, our enrollment will drop down in June. And so when our Mars Coordinator does a three-year estimate, they have to enter that information at MDE, and this is the number they go with, which is why our previous CFO put in 7985, but we're coming in at a little over 8,000. You always budget low. And then if it comes in higher, I, I think we will end up higher, but this is the estimate that is sitting with MDE legislative.
Okay, so 40% you budget low, 10%, 2%, 3% lower, or is it, are we going lower than that?
We're not, I'm going a little bit higher than Kathy, our, the previous CFO from last year. But this is the estimate that is sitting with MDE right now. This is even the estimate they gave us. And they do it, they take a three-year average. Because, and now our numbers will drop again in June, so...
I kind of, I kind of giggle because I think it was my first year on the board, and I can remember this budget comment and, and our, I, I think our CFO was saying the same thing, conservative, and I was like, what? Why do we have to be conservative? Let's, let's go a little bit more risky and let's staff those buildings with that riskier thing, because I, I would think that when we go conservative, that forces our administration to tighten up and maybe not go forward with a hire or a program. And then we get to October or November and we, or maybe even September, and we find out that we can, we can take a little bit more because our numbers came up. But, you know, you guys are the experts, I'm not. I'm going to be...
We've always gone conservative, and it seems like we always end up quite a bit higher. So that's why I'm questioning location. A conservative number would be a little higher than 8,000.
That's not how they recommend it. And even, I went into our levy and the MDE request for our pupil count, and they're even going with 7989. So that is where, that's the number they use to base off our basic formula. So I guess there's a good answer for you. That's the number they use to give us our money.
And we really budget from a perspective of preparing for potential, you know, even though there's a good chance that we won't have rain, we still want to be prepared for it. And so this is, this is not a, while it might be a somewhat careful amount, it's, it's not like a, it's not like a ridiculously conservative amount. And so I think having been in districts where you have to make cuts mid-year.
We don't.
It's a lot easier to add back a little bit than it is to take away in the middle.
I get, I get that, right. I understand that.
You understand that.
Of course. But, okay, so, but we have these low ATM numbers that people constantly start with. It seems like year after year, we're over 8,000, and sometimes well over 8,000. I mean, are we able then to hire and fill teaching needs or staff needs appropriately when we realize that we have now these...
That's a great question, that is an excellent question, because then now, then we will get an email saying we now have 35 students in a classroom that we were 25, so then with, you know, we're working with the Assistant Superintendent, then we go in and say, okay, you can hire another half-time person. So we pivot and make adjustments all year round to...
So are we able to pivot in August so that we can have that extra elementary class we teach here before school starts?
Well, we won't know yet. August is a little too soon, we won't have a count until October.
And usually if that, usually if that happens...
No, no, go ahead.
Usually if that happens, it's usually kindergarten, right? So sometimes it's a big bubble that comes in and the school might, you know, they're projecting they're going to have 60 kids, but all of a sudden, 75 show up, or 80. Then we quickly make those kind of adjustments and open up another kindergarten. That's typically how it happens with a really, really late hire. I'm real happy with that.
And my, my comment was just, I have seen my time on the board, those pivots happening in August, even in early September, so, you know, that pivot does happen.
We, we do it, yes, absolutely.
And it's important for us to be ready and be responsive. And I would say one thing that we've done this year, we started on last year, but we're in a much, much better place this year, is our hiring timelines. I think last year, we were hiring a lot of ESSAR positions and we were still scrambling, trying to get our hiring in place. We're months ahead of where we were thanks to the work of our Human Resources Department and our administrators as a whole. And so, so if we have a later addition in, in August, it's, it's going to be the outlier rather than, we're, we're still doing a whole bunch of hiring and we have to hire one more. So I think we've, we've done a really good job of, of making sure that we're getting the cream of the crop teachers early in the hiring season rather than scrambling at the end. And we have a few people that are kind of on deck in, you know, teacher on call, you know, full-time floating sub type positions and things like that, that sometimes are good people that we want to recruit into, so there's, there's people kind of waiting in the wings.
Great, all great questions, thank you. I find, I found the answer that you were asking about the per pupil unit amount for last, this current year is 6,863.
Thank you.
You're welcome, I can go ahead and write it down somewhere. Okay, so pupil counts, we talked about, okay, we're back on page three. Food and nutrition, breakfast and lunch are free for all students starting in '24, although we already do breakfast. The application for educational benefits, also known as the Free and Reduced Meal Form, is still required by MDE to be filled out by families. And details regarding reimbursements to districts are forthcoming. Please see the FAQ attached. I attached a seven-page, the most updated FAQ on food and nutrition. I won't read those to you, you can read those, but we still don't know, and I confirmed this with MDE this weekend, that we still do not have a, a clear direction on how we're getting reimbursed for all the food that we will be providing.
We don't. And are we providing both breakfast and lunch this summer or just lunch?
Breakfast and lunch. Oh, yep, you're right.
And so we've been doing breakfast free for years.
For years, this district has been doing that for years.
And that isn't typical in other districts? I just assume since we were...
It's not, not where I came from.
Okay, good for us.
Okay, so other local revenues are estimated by prior year funding amounts, and I have some notes here. Local revenue includes property tax levy, miscellaneous tax revenues, county apportionment, tuition fees, admissions, medical assistance, interest earnings, rent, gifts, and requests. Also insurance recovery, sale of materials and equipment, and other miscellaneous revenues. State revenue includes payments by the Department of Education and other state agencies, and our federal revenue includes aids awarded through state agencies or directly from federal resources. Our restricted revenues require a reserved fund balance if funding is not all spent in the allocated fiscal year. Most restricted revenues are intended to be spent in full in the allocated fiscal year. They really encourage that.
Can we give an example of that? Of what we, what we have right now in a restrictive fund that we either have used it all and it's done?
Staff development. We have it, we try and spend down staff development as much as possible. At the end of the year, we will reallocate three personal, or PB days. Certified staff alone costs is $320,000 a day. So we can get to close to a million dollars, but sometimes there are funds left over, and even if it's 50,000 or 100,000, we put it in that reserve fund balance and we can roll it over. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. So restricted reserved revenues come from state and local sources. Undesignated revenues come from federal, state, and local resources, and the largest of which is the Basic Formula Allowance. Undesignated revenues may have individual calculations but do not have a required reserve fund balance. And our federal sources are often reimbursements and have allowable carryover provisions during subsequent fiscal years. Use of federal funds has limitations. So that is an answer to your question. That, those are reimbursements, so we have to spend the money and get the money. And we usually happen to do an application, and it can be quite intensive and comprehensive. And we usually happen to do an application and it can be quite intensive and comprehensive. That has to get approved first. Any questions? If we move on to page four. Okay, page four. So here is a, the revenue budget summary that I've broken down for, for you. And I use the same format that previous CFO gave you last year or so. And it makes sense to me, but it is broken down by our basic revenue and then our restricted reserve. Our undesignated revenue is at a little over sixty-seven million. We anticipate federal programs coming in at a little four million. Special education, sixteen million. And this is just state aid. We will get, of course, federal money for special education.
And that figure includes the cross subsidy amount?
Yes.
Okay.
The transportation at three point six million. Telecom access is a hundred and forty thousand. The American Indian aid now with that increase is at four nineteen. And then a medical assistance, I really drove this number up this year. Our, excuse me, FY twenty-four. We think that's an untapped spot, so we are, I increased that number. I anticipate getting in one point six million.
That's a million over last year. We're bumping that up.
That is correct.
And tell me what medical assistance is.
So for, this is involved in special education. And for every student that we service, we can bill out.
That's right.
Yep. To a, to their home district for any extra services that we're providing or to their insurance company.
So you're saying that you think we will bill out one, one million?
Point six million, yes. Our restricted, reserved, and our staff development for this, and for FY twenty-four will be at a million one. Operating capital, one point nine million. Here's our basic skills and comp ed at seven point seven million. We got, we received five point five million this year. So we got a significant increase in our comp ed. Gifted and talented will be coming in at a hundred and fourteen thousand. Learning and development is one point seven million. Our ALC, one point nine. LTFM, I lowered that to eight hundred and fifteen thousand because of our adjustments. Achievement and integration, that budget is one point seven million. And Safe Schools is three hundred and five thousand. So the total general fund is at a little over a hundred and eleven million. So now here comes the fun part. And we will get deep into the Esser at the end. But we're potentially looking at ten million coming in from Esser. For transparency purposes, I put the seven point eight million for land sale, but I hope to move that to a assigned fund balance and use that sparingly. Our cross subsidy increase is at three point seven million. And our basic fund allowance increase is two point seven million. For a total of a hundred and thirty-six million, twenty-two thousand, eight hundred seventeen dollars.
So you believe that, or we see that there's twenty, twenty-four, almost, you know, twenty, twenty-four from what the increases in our legislature and what our Esser remaining money is? That's kind of how much we could see this district getting with that increase in formula and all those little things?
Yes, that's why I separated.
And then somewhere down in, in our budget, or maybe we don't get that yet, is like all the other unfunded mandates we have to do that are gonna eat away at that twenty-four million or, or not yet? Not yet, we don't get that yet.
We'll get there, we'll get there, yes.
Can you just, the Safe Schools, just kind of highlight a few of the things that are covered under the Safe Schools?
We can do a counselor, we can do an officer. But mostly, most districts can code a school counselor to that. That's what I used to do.
So to, to Chair Lowfold's point, if, if we didn't have the Esser funds or if we didn't have the land sale, or if we didn't have both, where, where would we be?
We would not be able to have all the programs we have right now.
We have some pretty, pretty significant reductions in force too.
Yes.
So I think that's kind of, not trying to be held. I'm just saying that eighteen thou, eighteen million of the twenty-four million is money that we won't have in the, in the future.
Ten million for sure. We won't have that in FY twenty-five. That money will drop off, the Esser money. But I have a very deep explanation of what we've got in Esser coming up. And so we'll talk about that. Okay, that's page four. Now we'll go to page five. I just did a, one more sum, one-time summary for you, what we will get from the legislature for seven oh nine. Our adjusted ADM, these are all numbers that came from a spreadsheet. Adjusted APU, which eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight, that's saying how many students are in the district total. A formula allowance increase, access to menstrual products, whether we're able to use English learner revenue, American Indian education aid. These are all numbers that I already discussed. Student support, library, special education, cross subsidy. So those numbers all came to six million, nine fifty-five, oh ninety-six. I wanted to total those increases for you. Okay? Okay, that's, let's go to page six. So our general fund revenues, as we've already known, came two hundred and thirty-six million, twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars. Our general fund expenditures are sitting one point one million dollars less than our revenue, which is to the good. But I have, I left a small landing for us because I don't know where unemployment's coming in. I don't know yet what food service is doing. So I left a little balance in there to the good for us because I don't know yet what those mandates will be.
Do you, and I might have missed this, I'm sorry, maybe I shouldn't get off track. But do we, are, I see it with basic skills and comp ed. So you, you think, are you generalizing what you think we'll get for comp ed even though?
No, that's a real number.
So, so that is a, comp ed is a real number for coming up FY twenty-four? It is because it's based on FY twenty-three?
And it's held harmless through FY twenty-seven.
Okay.
It's really exciting.
Okay, okay.
In our five-year plan that I sent to our financial advisors, that number will be held harmless there.
Is it a good, is it a good held harmless?
It's a good held harmless.
For our comp ed dollars?
Yes, because we received a little under five point five million this year. So the new number that came in for next year, they're holding harmless to the FY twenty-four number for several years, which is great.
Was it the old number that was cupping us?
It was a little under five and a half million. So it wasn't ten cupping us, but this is two point some million more, which is really nice.
The special ed number.
So even though we've, we've got the forms coming in, we turn those in, if they see that we are not matching that holding harmless, they're just gonna still hold us harmless?
We still get the same number, which is quite thrilling.
And then am I gonna go down the weeds if I ask you? Where, how do we know that we're gonna, we, we have done eighty percent or maybe even more? And now the legislature has mandated that?
Yes, yeah, so we'll talk comp ed now. So it is now mandated at eighty percent. The previous ruling was we only had to use fifty percent.
But then the school board took action.
And by school board action, you can change that. What I have done for FY twenty-three, we're at a hundred percent. We are keeping that money at each site a hundred percent. And we're using it for salary, if you will, salary and benefits. And for budgeting for next year, if we have a program that needs comp ed dollars, they have it now and we're using comp ed dollars to help offset.
Thank you.
You're welcome. No, I, we moved that to a hundred percent here for this year. I, I like doing that a lot better.
Okay.
Yeah. We're not moving money around that was raised by another site and moving it to another site. We're keeping it where it was successfully earned.
And that's gonna keep going on?
Yes, yes. Okay, oh, I'll finish page six here. So food service coming in at four million thirty-nine. The expenditures at four million twelve, so I'm saying we might have a slight increase. You'll see, and I have a breakdown for food service. I have a pie chart and charts. And it will show you where, where we have that money sitting. Do you have a, do you see what we're doing?
Yeah, I do. I thought it was on the rock page, but I see one seventy-three to one seventy-one. I just didn't see the, what was the difference, the two, what did you say?
It's like twenty thousand dollars, twenty-six thousand, twenty-seven thousand dollar difference. I'm showing in revenue over expenditures. It's, it's pretty much a balanced budget. Community service is coming in at eight million four. I'm showing right now we might spend eight million three. Now that is a restricted fund, so whatever we don't spend, I can null that over into a restricted fund and keep it on the fund balance. So it doesn't go anywhere else and it can only be spent in our community ed. I took Fund Six off of there because that was our new site and all of our money should, pretty much is spent. So I don't have anything in there. The, the only thing I might change is we have that LTFM bond sitting that the, the district approved last year. And if we start, we have started spending a little bit of it. But if we start doing some LTFM projects, I will put those expenditures and revenues in there for you. Okay, but the Fund Six was initially your DSC site, our hour, and it's spent. Okay? Our debt service is twenty-three million six. That is basically a balanced budget. Our trust fund, same. And then our internal service is our dental. Those are really amounts that we really can't control too much. Okay, page seven. Only thirty more to go. I promise, oh, some of them I don't have to talk about.
If you get some ongoing, you're gonna hear this.
It was that, it was that kind of laugh.
I'll start cracking some jokes here. I said page seven, only forty more to go.
Yes.
That's a great, that's not a good idea.
I, I may have forgotten him at three AM from a trip this weekend.
Oh.
I apologize that I needed a little caffeine to keep me energized.
Okay, so.
Can we turn the air conditioning on? It's freezing in here. It really is. It's just like humming.
Oh, yeah, it's at seventy-two too.
It's hard, we, we don't really have a double break.
So we can't change?
You can change it, but it, it will not change. And you can move it, but it won't change this. It's like on a cycle.
Oh, definitely.
Two more months.
Okay.
Let's go to page eight. I think seven is the do for it. We were so excited about running our, not using a copier. Okay, let's go to page eight. See, I just lowered the page for us. So here, I wanted to give this in, there you go. Page eight is our fund balance analysis. I wanted to give this to you because I, I believe in this little policy. The school board policy is to maintain our fund balance at eight percent, which is essentially a savings account for us. And what I wanted to show to you is in FY, in 2022, so those are actual numbers, our assigned fund balance was ten million ninety. Do you see that? Assigned fund balance. At the top, there. Those are mostly capital funds that we can use for curriculum. I, I have a breakdown of them. But what I want to show you is that in FY twenty-three, it got bumped up to seventeen eight. There is our land sale. The reason is we got the money this year, but we're not gonna just start using it until next year unless we decide to do a transfer to offset Esser. But we'll, we have to look at that. But I wanted to show that we're putting it into an assigned fund balance and it will carry forward to next year, to FY twenty-four, okay? I can, you don't, I don't have to read all the other ones, the non-spendables. Our restricted, reserved, in twenty-two, our actuals after the audit, were at five million nine. We think we're gonna come in at five million twenty-nine this year, but we want to go back up in twenty-four, back up to five million two. Now, these are all estimates that this year and next year will be. So I, I can't give you any hard numbers there. Those are all estimates. So these numbers are driven by the fact that I was able to put into this new analytics, we want to keep at eight percent. So by putting in eight percent, it drives that this is where we need to land to keep us at our eight percent fund balance. And I, I want to remind the district as well, we spend between ten and twelve million dollars a month in bills and payroll. So ten million dollars in Esser funds is basically one month worth of money for us. So that's why I'm really, it's important to me and the superintendent moves up as well, that even if we can drive up that number by our SOD calculation by half a percent, I'm happy because we're trying to move the needle forward. Previous CFO was very successful in doing that and I hope to keep that going. Where we, even if it's a half a percent or a one percent, let's try and keep that fund balance growing.
So you're saying that, that you're basing our upcoming budget on the fact that you're going to move, you're gonna, this, this money is going here?
Yes, eight percent needs to be put there.
Okay.
Okay?
And you've got that already on your, on everything we've got? You've already made a prediction of eight percent is already gonna go into here?
Yes, that's why I included this form for you. I thought it was a good, to visualize it. But you know, if you look at your restricted funds in next year, is five million two, our unassigned is eight million two. Well, I just said it takes ten to twelve million a month to run the district. So we're still, we, we have some work to do there, okay?
And I would say that the, the work that the board has done on budget and, and the district as well, we were, we're at about five hundred thousand in unassigned fund balance when, when I started here. And it wasn't me that turned it around, it was you all who've done it as well as previous teams and current teams. But to take us up to eight point two million, and that, that's a big part of the reason why that Moody's rating had the double jump. So we're seen as a solid financial organization, whereas previously we were close to statutory operating debt.
How many months do we want to have? What is the?
So, auditors like, honestly, the auditors like to see seventy days' worth of cash. That was, I was able to, in a smaller district, at a big district, I think that's, that's a hard number to beat. I mean, two months' worth of cash on hand, we'd have to have roughly twenty-five million dollars, twenty-two million. I think, like I said, we, that, you're looking at ten years to get there. But we maintain that eight percent. And in the audit, it will tell you how many days of cash you have. So it's, it'll either say eight days, twenty days, or seventy days. It's in the audit, so they do track that number as an important piece.
And I, I just want to reiterate again. We went from five hundred thousand to over eight million since Superintendent Magus. Not only that, we bumped our Moody's rating up and we are in an environment right now where large school districts, there's an article in the paper today about St. Paul, where they're pulling out of their fund balance to cover their oper, their daily operating. And we are doing the opposite, which is putting money into our fund balance and forecasting. Not saying we are not, we are immune to having some budgetary problems in the next three to five years, but we are set up in a way that will make it less painful if it gets to that point.
We've always talked about scaffolding off of the Esser cliff and I think that that's what has been done here. And I think that a lot of other boards want it, like they wanted to say yes to everything. And we wanted to say yes too, but we made some, some hard choices in the Esser spending that you'll see later. We, we did reduce our Esser positions. We reduced about ten positions of the forty we had for this coming year. But that was partly because, like most districts, we realized that Esser funding's going away and we have to spend on things rather than people.
Going back to the three hundred thousand dollar fund, I remember that because of charter schools. But I lost track of what happened to our request to the legislature to get some of that reimbursed.
So, uh, that was, that was something that they, it had been carried forward last year, and was gonna be put in a, on the bus spending bill, but they couldn't agree on it. And then this year, uh, we advocated pretty strongly for it again, but fairly early in the conversation, they said, "We're not gonna do any one-off. We're, we're gonna increase, we're gonna lift for everybody, and we're not gonna do a lot of one-off expenditures for districts." In fact, I think we were one of the only districts that got a one-off, and that was for, uh, some funding for, for gender-inclusive bathrooms, and it was early this, uh, several of our good students and, and others presented, and they wanted to give us money there. But that, uh, I'm trying to think that the amount that we're at before was at two million.
Yeah.
Yeah, two, two million, we've been asking for for quite a few years, but I think that's, at this point, I'd say that, that, that ship is probably sailing for now.
And the feds still don't pay their insurance.
No.
And that's unlikely, given the current.
Yes. The federal.
Unless you're a battleship.
The federal expenditures on, on education are likely to decrease, so I think we have, like, as we're thinking about that rainy day forecast, we have to think about that too. The state matters a lot, most of the federal government allocations matter quite a bit as well.
And I also want to point out, um, our sole, our pro, compensatory is held harmless for several more years, and our cross subsidy is at forty-four percent next year. Forty-four percent in FY twenty-five, but in twenty-six, it goes up to fifty percent. So that's huge, and that has been all built into our five-year plan, okay?
Because of this wonderful analyst.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, page nine, so, um, here are some good visuals for everybody.
Carrying on the tradition.
Carrying on the tradition, yes.
Notice that these pie charts have three dimensions on them.
Yes, yes. Very excited about the pie charts. Um, so down below, um, where it says revenue sources, uh, it has your twenty-one, twenty-two actuals. Your, our twenty-three are still estimates, uh, the audit will, that audit work starts July one. And then we have the twenty-three, twenty-four. Property taxes for FY twenty-four, since that's the year we're discussing, uh, will be twelve point six one percent of our budget revenue. I'm at the far right of that grid down below. Our state aids will be seventy-two point zero eight percent. Our federal aids will be eleven point nine five percent. And other miscellaneous, which I explained what those are, is roughly at three, not quite three and a half percent. And what I'd like for you to do is take a visual of where twenty-one, twenty-two landed. Our actual revenue came in at a hundred and twenty-seven million. We did our revised budget that you just approved over a month ago. We bumped that up to one thirty-nine, but now we're going to drop that down to one thirty-six. And if you'll notice, in other miscellaneous, our actual, uh, was six million six. In twenty-three, our actual was twelve-five, and that was our land sale. And then in twenty-three, twenty-four, now it drops down to four million five, because we are recording the land sale, uh, this year. Okay, do you have any questions?
Hundred percent.
Are we, are we contemplating a future opportunity or option to sell the Barfield site, or is that something that's been discussed?
Superintendent.
Sure. So we've had some preliminary conversations, and I think it'd be good for us to have a closed session with the board in the near future, just to talk about, uh, some, some potential options for Barfield site and the transportation site on Superior, just to think about, um, you know, since we have a new bus garage on the hill, we probably don't have as much need for that site, but, and we do have some perspective interest in that, as well as the Barfield site. So, uh, I think we could schedule something and have some, some, uh, conversations on what that could be, mean for us. I think that there are a variety of different, variety of different options, and we want to make sure that the board is informed about all those, as we report. I would say, just to reiterate for the public again, it looks really good right now. We are in a good spot right now, partly because of ESAR, partly because of seven point eight million dollars for the sale, and we're in a better spot because we've been thoughtful financially, but we do, as we forecasted out, there is a pretty significant drop-off because we, we don't have the money to, to continue funding for technology and other things, and that, that's something that Bear presents. You'll learn, learn more about there and some more, probably, too.
Yes.
So it's sunny today, but.
It's sunny, we're gonna.
But the changes are.
We're being transparent.
But we're gonna remember. Okay, um, so let's move to page ten. So what you just saw on page nine was your revenue. On page ten are our expenditures by program. That was presented to you in the past that way. I've also done an additional lovely pie chart to present by object code. Um, and it tells you a his, it tells you a story there as well at the bottom, what we actually spent in our, uh, programs in twenty-two, where our budget is going to hopefully land in twenty-three, where our audit will land, and then in twenty-four, what our projections are for expenditures. As you can see, our elementary and secondary instruction, uh, is our largest source of expenditures, and of course, so is our special education. And that's where it should be, it's with our staff. Uh, the next pie chart will tell you, uh, better. Um, the next, on page eleven.
Quick question, please. Uh, as you look at the administrative number, you'll see that it, it, uh, we decreased last year, and we've kept it pretty much steady at that decrease, uh, as far as the administrative costs. We have had an increase in the district support, and those would be positions like the TSS specialist and things like that, or what would that?
Yes, and paraprofessionals, bus drivers, food service, clerics, they all fall under that number.
So we've increased our expenditures in that.
In April, yeah. And our pie chart here on the next page will help explain that, that, um, they, a little over eighty percent of our budget is spent on salaries and employee benefits. And I was always taught that we should be between seventy and eighty-two to eighty-five percent. So we're landing where we need to be as far as staff. Of course, purchase services, supplies, capital expenditures, and other expenditures are, make up a small part of that pie. Mostly it's, uh, in staffing and benefits. So page, oh, that's page eleven. If you go to page twelve, here's our food service pie, uh, revenue. And, um, so here I wanted to point out, in our food service revenue, if you'll see in twenty-one, twenty-two, on the, on page twelve, pupil sales were a hundred and fourteen thousand, that was our COVID, page twelve. Okay? And twenty-one, twenty-two actual, our, our pupil sales came in a little over a hundred and fourteen thousand. Last, this year, we're saying we're going to receive one point four million because we are charging for meals again. But I will tell you, our unpaid meal dollar amount is extremely high, extremely high. So I don't know what the conversation will be there. Um, I know we did a write-off a couple of years ago, but it, it's extraordinarily high.
So how does this change going forward if the state's providing, you know, meals for all of our students?
Yeah, so I brought, that's why I carried that same number forward under pupil sales, um, because I don't know yet where we're landing. I don't know how we're gonna make up that money. So I use that as a plug for right now. I did speak with, um, Sheila Oak today, and, um, they will be not serving a second, so right now, students can purchase second meals. We won't be doing that right off the bat, because she's not sure yet of what the volume will be for lunches. Are we going to have more students? They will always have access to second, third helpings to fruits and vegetables. Um, but as far as people going in and buying another slice of pizza or another burger, uh, that won't, we won't start that right away, but they will always have, um, additional fruits and vegetables, because we don't know yet the volume. So, and I'm using that pupil sales number as a plug, because I, I'm gonna try and figure out where we can make that num, money up.
Well, wouldn't they, wouldn't this, wouldn't the MDE see that we, we typically spend four million on our, and then that's what they'll reimburse us?
Well, it's one and a half billion that they definitely have, right?
Yeah, one and a half billion, but I hope so. That is, that's what everyone's waiting for breathlessly. We know we will still have, when I spoke with our previous CFO on Sunday, she said we, there will, there's an application we have to fill out, and they explained it in that FAQ I gave it to you, that I, I attached. So I, I'm holding there, but I put that in as a plug, so we know what, where we have to make up some money.
What is, what is the amount? When you say it's substantial, what is substantial?
It's over a hundred thousand dollars.
That's, that's current outstanding.
We might come in at a hundred and twelve thousand.
Even we have every year, you know, people that have come forward to, you know, help cover the cost of unpaid meals at various sites, but that's a, that's a lot to expect.
First year I got here, uh, April of twenty-one, and, and June, I started the audit work. We were unpaid at twenty-six thousand dollars. So it's been significant of the increase. We're just up there.
And I think when people are thinking about this, you know, free meal, free meal thing, they just won't take out. It's not gonna get any better.
I was under the impression too that our free breakfast and lunch was more, that the legislators say that you, you won't go, go back for seconds unless you pay for that second meal.
That's correct. They will have to pay for it, that second meal. But right now, we, when we start school, they won't even be offering that, because we.
I gotcha, okay.
Food nutrition, uh, manager Sheila Oak does not know where, what the volume is going to be yet. Okay, so I am, um, I did a, a pie chart by object code for you for school service. So let's go to page fourteen. We have now community service revenue budget. Um, property taxes will pay for nine point nine three percent of our revenue. Uh, state aids will supply the little over thirty-two percent of our revenue. Our federal aids will be thirty-five percent. And our local revenues, which we think is from people coming in and taking classes from us, will be at twenty-two percent. Again, that is an estimate to, um, you know, if we can, we take, get a lot of classes, that our offerings are good, and people take them, then, and that number could go up or could go down. But if you'll see, I align that with the FY twenty-two actuals. Um, I like to use historical data for budgeting, and in FY twenty-two, we received one point eight million. Uh, we kept that pretty much the same across the board. We did a little bit of adjustment. Uh, we also gave you an object code expenditure page. Fifty-two percent is in salaries, uh, twenty-five percent in employee benefits, and supplies is fifteen percent, and then we have some very small capital expenditures.
So in community service or community ed, this is their budget, right? So we have our director of community ed, and this money then is put in that fund, and that's where they work out of for salaries, marketing, classes.
Fund four, and it's a restricted fund too, so what they don't spend, we can put away into their fund balance.
For them for the next year.
That's correct.
Do we, do we often know what, do they spend their whole budget, or?
Not always. They, they did struggle the last two years.
Yes, that's true, yeah.
People were simply not taking classes, so honestly, the fund balance has jumped up nicely.
A little bit.
A little bit, um, they're sitting on a nice fund balance, but due to nobody's fault, people just simply weren't engaging in outside classes. But Assistant Superintendent Bonds and his community ed coordinator are doing a great job of planning and mapping that out for next year, so I anticipate some, some good resources coming home.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Your, your great presentation was. So when we, when we look at the, um, overall budget, and we look at what's spent on salaries and benefits, it's eighty percent. When we look at food service, it's.
Um, just, can you just share what page you're on right now, just like.
Variety of pages, um, I don't see the page number on it right now. So, so basically what I was gonna say is, is eighty percent budget and, um, budget salary, or I'm sorry, eighty-five percent benefits and salary for the district as a whole. It's around forty-seven percent of food service. For community ed, it is, it's like seventy-seven percent. So just thinking about like, why, why do those fluctuate in different areas?
I can answer that.
Is it because of the cost of the employees, or?
Food service, we have not had, we've not been fully staffed, that's the bottom line. We, as with bus drivers, still just constantly looking for our food service workers. Uh, the ones we have are awesome, but we need more. That's the bottom line. We just simply are short-staffed. Okay, so moving right along, we've done community service. Uh, our, you're gonna, I hope you'll lap at the next couple of pie charts. Our debt service, um, we get, um, ninety-one percent of our debt service that we have to pay, our payments that we make every year to pay off our debt, comes from property taxes. Uh, the orange is nine percent is from state aid. I, I gave you that pie chart. We've got better ones coming.
That's on seventeen?
Page sixteen, sorry.
Sixteen, okay. Oh, okay.
Yeah. And debt service is what it is. I, we have no, that's, like I said, through property tax payments and some local revenues, but we can't, I can't really do much for that. Um, our, that's our debt service revenue, but our debt service expenditure by object code, a hundred percent, is paid to debt service. And that's a full blue pie chart.
It certainly is. With a lot of blue ink right there.
Lot of blue ink there. Uh, page eighteen, same for our trust fund. Uh, for revenue and object code, a hundred percent is paid by local revenue, so that is our retirees paying in, paying their insurance bills.
I think I'm paying mine.
Yeah, yes, you do.
You're a slipper in there, too.
You're like, did I make my?
Oh, that's funny.
Um, page twenty is our internal service revenue. This is our dental, a hundred percent paid by our retirees or active. And, um, on the, by object code, by, on page twenty-one, it shows that ninety-three percent comes out of our employee benefits out of payroll. That's where we deduct our dental pay. Okay? And we're almost at the end. Page twenty-two, um, I wanted to give you as much information as far with our ADM as possible. Here's some historical information, um, from all the way back to sixteen-seventeen. And this information is used with our five-year analytics as well, because they can do some good projections. In twenty-two, twenty-three, the original budget, uh, was seven thousand nine, nine ninety-five. That number now, as you remember, June, our numbers are gonna change. People, for whatever reason, it changes sometimes, drops. Um, but we think we might come in at eight thousand thirty-four to remember Sandholm's point, but we always budget low. Be conservative there, it's better to say, hey, we got more money than to say, I gotta take it away. Uh, page twenty-three just gives you some actuals, um, early childhood, voluntary pre-K, K-six, seven-twelve, total ADM. As you can see, in seventeen, eighteen, we were up one point eight four percent. And do you see in twenty-twenty-one during the pandemic, we were down six point, point six percent. We went back up in twenty-two, two point seven eight. I know twenty-two, twenty-three says a minus one oh nine because we don't have any final numbers, and I want to know that till next fall. Because it's still based on that low of seven nine ninety-five. We hope it comes in higher. Page twenty-four and twenty-five, you've already seen these handouts in your monthly handouts, but I wanted to just remind you where our projected ADM is coming in on page twenty-four. You look at the red. Right now, we were up seventy point six five ADM, but June, June would reflect a different number. Page twenty-five is an enrollment report by grade, by site. I thought you'd like to see that information again.
And this goes through the end of April?
Correct. This was the May report, yes, yes. And so that's twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six through Twenty-six. So the MDE free meals, school meals program frequently asks questions. That's for your own information. I'm not going to go through that.
Thank you.
Okay? It, it, it does say that they're still working on how to figure out how to repay the district for our food. We do now have to provide community meals during the summer. We, I spoke with Sheila Ove today. We've always done that, but now it's a requirement by MDE, and it is based on which areas qualify. Okay, some areas don't qualify for it. So that, all of that is in here, okay? So let's get to the last.
So would it be like page forty-one?
So page forty-one, our ESER. Here's our, the first page forty-one is our finance one sixty. That was our big pot of sixteen million. It has to be spent down by next June. And what I gave you right now are your actual year-to-date expenses. I, this budget has been shown to you many times. So I thought now I'm gonna show you what we actually have spent. I still have payroll that will have to roll through the end of August. I did an estimate of two point six million. I bumped that up a little bit because we've been coding our MTSS workers to finance one six one. You'll see it when I come to the backside. I am working very closely with MDE and Assistant Superintendent Bonds to, to align those, perhaps the two pots. He's already written the theory of change and all that, but we have a very particular MDE person who's in charge of this grant and is, dots every I and crosses every T. So we are following the rules very carefully. We hope to get that through finance one six one, but right now, I may have to move the MTSS workers this year into finance one six zero at the end of the year. When we do the audit, that, all that cleanup work will get done. So I anticipate.
And are we getting MTSS money too from the legislature?
A little, but right now this is all paid by ESER.
Okay, okay.
So I, I bumped up our payroll. I anticipate that coming in. So I anticipate, our estimated expenses right now are at eleven, eleven million two. But if we use two million of our land sale and possibly our HOX money to offset our ESER, which will mean we have spent nine million two this year. And our budget left then for this FY twenty-four is six million seven. And as to the superintendent's point, we're gonna highly recommend that, I've already discussed this with the superintendent and Assistant Superintendent, that we really invest in non-labor items next year as much as possible because those will sustain us and we can hang on to them. If we do all of it to staffing, those all have to go away. So the, as much as possible, the Assistant Superintendent is going to work on buying, purchasing non-labor items that we will see for the next five to ten years. Okay?
For example, I'll give you an example.
What are we thinking there?
Yeah, some examples that we've already made some purchases on already are classroom, library sets at our elementary. So literacy is important. We know that our students and teachers are in need of resources. So what we have done is spent, I wanna say five hundred thousand dollars that we've spent this year to purchase classroom sets within the, the four classroom libraries for the university. So that's an example. So we know those resources will be available for, you know, five, six years. That's an example. We'll be looking at other purchases very similar to that curriculum. We've talked a lot about social studies books being outdated, math resources being outdated. So we're trying to take a hard look at what are those things that we really want to spend money's on now while we have those funds, one-time purchases. It will outlast ESER. So.
So I gave you our projected budget for, for FY twenty-four, and we've built in some money for programming, secondary support, student-based programs. That is all money that we can use for non-labor. Okay? So that is finance one six zero. Do you have any more questions before we move on to one, if you turn the page? Now, this is finance one six one. It was initially set up as a summer school and extended day program. So that is a, it's a little bit of a struggle because you basically start your, your, it's July, August, and the following June. Well, if you have smaller programs and you don't, I mean, if you're stuck only spending in those areas, it's, it's difficult sometimes. But we are working closely with MDE. We do have our approval for this year, and our remaining budget for next year is three million two. And again, you'll see where I put our MTSS structure. We'd like to pay for it out of finance one six one. But we are, we're still, we, we have the money. They're just really making us jump through the hoops as far as the amendment process.
Right. And, and for example, we've talked about this before. So one six one is for extended learning, so before school, after school, summer school. But there's a little loophole that says if you would like to use it during the school day, you have to write a theory of change, a rationale for justification. So we have submitted a, a theory of change to really work on the social emotional needs of kids by using the integration spec, by using the MTSS specialists who can work on climate culture. Well, the first manager, I was saying manager, that MDE says.
Last summer.
Last summer, approved. So the theory of change was approved. And we have another manager now who's saying, hold on, it's really meant for before school, after school, summer school. And so we're working really closely with individual, and we know we're gonna work with them and have the resources spent out of one six one. If not, I'm working really, really aggressively to try to connect with other business partners to actually provide grants to those agencies to provide programming like the Y, CA, Domino's, other mentoring organizations. So we're trying to work with them to provide additional programming for after school and during the summer. So that's why, another example is, I think you heard, it may have, if you have students in the, in our district, we've provided a lot of hands-on learning opportunities for students this year. So a lot of field trips have been approved, resources have been provided to, again, provide enrichment opportunities to students who are ride-ways, and we're gonna be providing a summary list of all of those opportunities that have been given to students. Because again, the money is meant for those kind of opportunities. But we know that it's, it's interesting that four million dollars and I'm struggling to find partners and to even provide additional opportunities within the district because it's, it's been a, the pandemic was tough and, you know, individuals I think now are really focusing on family and not really wanting to take that time away for families and provide after-school opportunities, or they want their summers off. And that's understandable too. But then it leaves us with resources that we can't find enough partners to provide opportunities for our kids, but work it hard.
Did you, we, we, we had a partnership with the Y last summer. You at least presented it to us. Did that go through? Did you do that last summer with the Y?
We did that, yes. We received close to two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And.
Worked with them, yeah.
And we're gonna work with them again to provide some additional opportunities again for kids. So we have, you're gonna have to spend these resources and work it hard to spend them. I, I'm not a believer in giving away.
Letting go.
Letting go of funds or returning funds. I'm gonna spend every dollar. Remember Lockwood, Kevin, and neighbor Sandholm?
Uh, I, I think you answered my question, so I'll hold up for then.
Goodbye. So, so again, just for clarity, whether it's for me or anybody else here too. So ESER three, finance one sixty-one, this is for summer school and extended day.
Correct.
And this is a separate pot that needs to be used by the end of next summer. And then the previous page forty-one, the ESER three, finance one sixty, that's in separate pot that's, we want, going forward anyway, actually we want it for things that will carry on into the future, non-staffed.
Hopefully non-labor, yeah. We will still have, is it, it's, with coming up, how many people we will still have?
We are still spending quite a bit on, we kept about seventy-five percent of our positions for next year.
Correct.
See if that includes tech innovation specialists or some of those.
Maintain half of them.
Correct.
ESER fund one sixty-one does not apply to just our plain old downright summer school programs that are going on this summer that, you know, credit recovery or that, this money is, is not intended for that, nor do we want, we have money for that.
We have money for it. We receive funding for those. So this is above and beyond, lots of enrichment, lots of other opportunities we want to give to our students.
And that's why it's a struggle. I mean, basically, we have twelve weeks of summer, right, roughly? And how, how long is summer school? Six weeks, seven weeks?
Eight.
Eight weeks? So it's like you, we're trying to find, you know, that's why we'd like to blend in a little bit more with one sixty and hopefully offset some of our, our costs that way too. So, uh, Assistant Superintendent wrote a beautiful theory of change, and we're working through it, and we hope to get that blended a little bit more. But right now, they're two separate pots.
And I, I get it. I mean, as a high school teacher myself, I, I know that our students are not always looking for, it just, it takes an outside-the-box, I think, partnering with the Y or partnering with other agencies that are out there doing, because aren't you thinking of more like, like, you know, outside, you know, you might be able to teach science, but you're gonna teach it through the Riverwatch program or, or some, something that some, some teacher. So if a teacher came to you with an idea for using one sixty-one funds by doing something with our, you know, our either K two or our seven, eight or our nine, twelve, that was some kind of curricula, I mean, does, yeah.
That would.
That would, you'd, you'd want, you'd like those ideas, but we just haven't generated a lot of those potential ideas.
We have during the school year. Again, some of these things have happened during the school year. So lots of field trips, lots of taking students on a lot of just different opportunities, whether it's in cities and museums and things of that nature.
And that came out of one sixty-one because it was either before school or after school?
Correct.
Okay.
Or extended, yes, extended learning. And so that's, that's the trip.
Can we use it for the unity in schools event?
Can we use some of the ESER funds?
Some, if not that, you know, we can use a little bit of one sixty.
Family engagement.
Because it's all good defending.
And it is family engagement. What was that we did?
And I think the legislature, federal and state, had good intention with putting so much money towards one sixty-one.
I know, I know.
They thought basically like, hey, everybody's missed so much learning and so many opportunities. Let's put a whole bunch of money into summer school and after-school activities. But what they didn't really realize is that both the educators and the students were pretty exhausted in the past two years. And so to say, hey, let's do twelve months of school this year, didn't, didn't pan out for most districts across the country. And so I think that, that both the, the sort of the, the teachers being really exhausted and students being exhausted as well, didn't result in, in there being a huge appetite for, for expenditures in that area.
That's a great point.
But we can try. Goodbye.
So, so back to ESER three, finance one sixty, you have unallocated like eight hundred million dollars. And again, as a science teacher that taught us some very old science tech books, which I would hope to go into the schools and not see those anymore. But I, I don't know, where do we, what are we thinking there? I mean, I, I see that we're looking at another bus or two, you know, and that would probably be a good investment to, again.
So we're, we're showing, I'm showing a hundred, eight hundred and three thousand because I anticipate transferring two million from the land sale. If I don't do that, if I don't offset technology by that much, if I do one and a half, that number will drop down to three hundred thousand. We only have that unallocated because I anticipated a two million transfer. Now, if we don't transfer two million, I would like to use less. We can use a million, million and a half.
You're losing, you're getting here.
Okay.
How can you transfer money in or out of ESER? I mean, that ESER funds are ESER funds, right?
We're offset, we can offset ESER funds through the general fund from our assigned fund balance. So, so, okay, there's, so we have five million dollars that we spent in technology. I can take two million of it, recode it to a general fund, okay, to a general technology code, and then take two million from the assigned fund balance and offset it as a journal entry. But if we don't use all that two million in this current year, that just leaves more for us to use next year and upcoming years. So that's a question we will look at when the auditors get here. You know, I would prefer not to go with two million. I would like to use only one point five million just so we kind of keep that assigned fund balance higher.
So that means that eight, eight oh three.
Could drop to three hundred.
Could drop down.
Yeah.
And then we wouldn't have so much unallocated.
That is correct.
But we'd still have maybe enough for some outdated science equipment.
That is correct.
Or for buses, I mean, you know, and again, we still have pretty old fleet.
Yes, we do. And I, I have been asked if we could purchase four used ones to the two hundred, three hundred twenty thousand. I have to speak, you know, we have to talk about that. Do we want to spend three hundred twenty thousand on buses? I, we have a, a little bit of a laundry list of.
Potential.
Potentials, you know.
Because aren't we getting transportation funding some, from the state?
But it doesn't cover.
Much, okay.
And the needs in the curriculum, sorry.
And the needs are in curriculum.
The needs in curriculum are great.
Yeah, that, they're so outdated.
And so we, and it's all about timing too, because not every content area is on the curriculum cycle. So we don't wanna get too far ahead of the state coming out with new standards and new expectations before we purchase new materials because, trust me, I'm ready. Someone knows, I'm like, oh, we can replace these updated history books and math books and so forth. Right now, we wanted to, but they would be out of cycle and, and that would be problematic as well. So we don't wanna get too far ahead of what the state is gonna give us in terms of directions and expectations. And I don't wanna lose an opportunity to replace things while we have the resources.
And I don't know about the new reading literacy legislation that's coming down and what that's gonna demand or if there's money, I don't, is there money attached to it? I don't know if there's some.
Quite a bit for training.
Oh, for training, but not for the, for the actual materials?
Some might be for the materials too.
Okay.
But I think that if, if we were, it's kind of like we have deferred maintenance that we haven't taken care of when it comes to our curriculum. I would say we probably have at least five million dollars worth of curriculum holes that we could refill by, by updating our literacy curriculum, our math curriculum, our science, our social studies. Each of those, each of those expenditures are probably a million dollars each.
Right.
We do well. And we can't, we, we also can't have teachers, like if we did it at the elementary, we couldn't say, hey, elementary teachers, you're getting new literacy curriculum, the new math curriculum, the new science, you know? You, you have to think about like, what's the, what's the greatest amount that the system can handle of change without blowing people's capacity?
And the new literacy, that, that goes into effect in two years, right?
You can start, actually, you can start now using the funding, and you can actually retro for districts that were pioneering with the structured literacy. You can. retro for districts that were pioneering with the structured literacy. You can get reimbursement for, for training that you've already got. We actually have a celebration coming up for teachers who participated in letters training, except for old next week. So just so, since it cut it and I'm sure they would mind if it were the first thing to, we could, I can send that out. But I think that that letters training and work on funding and awareness is something that we really are going to have to double down on. We want to, because it's, and something good results for kids.
So when the audit happens, at that time, I will make a decision as far as how much we're going to offset our technology. I will discuss with administration how far do we, do we want to start pulling money from that land sale or how much? So I just put 2 million there, but it, you know, might be 1.5 million. Okay? Any further questions about ESER? Page 43 and 45. This is information for you as far as ESER ending positions. The entered FTE are there. The ended FTE in this year will be 16.05 FTE added back with new funding sources, 5.4. So a total FTE reduction of 10.6.
Remind me what the new funding source was?
General fund, yeah.
So some things that we said we're doing best or that we're not making permanent?
Right.
So tell me.
And then.
Let's save a little bit. So the question, another question was, what, what has been made permanent with the new funding?
So it printed, it should have printed on one page, but it printed on the back.
Yeah.
But I can tell you.
So the notes are supposed to align with?
Yeah, yeah, right. So it's the dean of students at Denfeld.
That's going to continue.
That is going to continue. The two alternatives to suspension type, they're called something different, but the function is the same at Denfeld. Those are being continued. The curriculum specialist elementary and the secondary innovation coordinator, those were our two lead technical advisors, and those are being combined into one position that will be all not specific to secondary and elementary. So that's one position for those two.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
Sorry, the secondary innovation.
We don't see that.
Yep, okay. Teacher TOSA?
The TOSA's.
TOSA's, got it.
It's underneath the Denfeld positions.
Okay, I got you.
Yep, TOSA's.
Yeah, the district wide. Those two that are kind of in the same box have been combined to be one position. So the secondary and then the, it's actually the one above it, the curriculum specialist elementary, right? Innovation, no, it's the two that are in there. The innovation coordinator and the district assessment coordinator have been combined to be one. Their names are, their titles are strange, but they were the, they were the, in charge of the digital innovation specialists, basically.
We had two and now we have one.
So we have one. That'll be K through 12 versus one for secondary. And then the other one, that's the teacher-student engagement TOSA towards the bottom of the page, that .4. That was paired with a .6 dean at Myers Wilkins, and now it will be converted to a full-time dean. So that's where the 5.4 comes back. So a total of 10.65 actual reduction in FTE of ESER. And then the other page, 45, is the positions that we kept for this upcoming school year, which is a total of 31.1.
And so that's what makes it, you know, it's going to be pretty difficult in terms of as we move towards next year. That's why one of the things we were striving for this year was to at least do 50/50. We're trying to say, okay, let's maintain 50% of positions, which means 50% reduction as we go on to next year. But we ended up only, as we're trying to say, we're communicating that we really ended up only decreasing by 25% versus 50%. And we should have been more at the 50% because we knew that if you, the board and, and the community and others have been hearing some concerns related to reductions in positions, we've been really consistent. We believe we need all of these positions. These, all these positions are necessary, they have value, they've been really, I think our building leaders would say, very helpful. Unfortunately, you know, as a district, that's a total of 42 FTE that we would have in place if ESER didn't exist.
So, so if I looked at some of our postings that I, that I know have been posted out of HR and I noticed that there's some, do, do the teachers that, or the positions that have, have had these, do they have to reapply because of ESER or are, so they do reapply? Because I noticed there was a dean opening at Denfeld.
Yes.
There's, the suspension, you know, people are, are, the job is posted there, but.
So anything that was funded ESER was categorized as temporary, and I say that loosely because from a PELRA perspective, it's not temporary, but because it had temporary funding. And so those individuals were displaced. Now that we have funding that we're able to put them, we need to repost it because they were, there may be more of a permanent possession.
Oh, I got you. Okay, okay.
And if you look at what was the ESER key versus the ESER N, very hard decisions. But part of what ESER was allocated for was working on unfinished learning and also mental health needs. Those were seen as the two primary functions. And so we, when we looked at what we were trying to make sure we kept, it was focused more heavily on some of the social, emotional, mental health, as well as the intervention-type positions. Not that we don't need all of them, but I think that those were the things that seemed more grounded in the, the primary drivers for the district at the time. We did work to keep many of our our digital innova-, I'm sorry, digital innovation specialists. And again, as I mentioned earlier, with the increase in library funding, we're hoping to maybe add back some there and have, have some, some of the responsibilities and some of the help that's needed for some of the digital innovation, also supported by the librarians as we increase full-time librarians back at the secondary.
Can you tell me what a teacher, an elementary reading intervention would be used for in the admin building? Or is that just district-wide and be reappointed? It's just halfway doomed. It just says teacher, elementary reading intervention, and then it's assigned to administration building?
I would say that's district-wide.
District-wide and we put them in buildings that, that need it?
The answer's probably yes, because we're going to quickly look and see who it is. Oh, Cindy. All right. So she's a, she's an individual who is supporting our interventionist and provides some directions and oversight for. So she is on a part-time contracted hour position.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As providing additional support for our interventionists, giving them directions.
An interventionist or an interventionist?
Correct.
The MPSS SEL coordinators, those TOSA positions, as we moved to have the district be full PBIS, I mean, I think trying to find a uniform practice that's good for everybody, that MPSS coordinator position we've heard is really valuable from our principals. They help with social, emotional learning with the students. They do intervention groups, things like that. And they make sure that the sys-, they're trying to lift the system and improve the system, too, so it's not just somebody trying to flood holes or catch people who are falling through the cracks. It's also a systems improvement position.
The instructional paras, can they be funded through different money that Laura MacArthur may receive because of being a Title I school?
We could potentially, yes, because it's, instructional parents are not special education and they're a school, yes, that receives significant money. So it would be, yes.
Whether it's comp aid or title.
Yes.
And would that decision be made at the school level with the principal?
That would be made with the TLE director and the assistant superintendent and the principal.
The enrollment at Laura MacArthur right now is, I'm 200-ish, right?
290.
Yeah, it's one 20 of me.
It was on, it is at 295. Oh, yeah, 295.
We currently have about 23 para professionals there. So there's a pretty, pretty high ratio of like one para to every 10 students there right now. So I'm not saying that we don't increase it. I'm just saying that we have to consider the full scope. We're also.
And I was getting at more who, who would make that decision if they needed it in a school that gets Title I funds?
Right. So it's partly through Darren Sheldon as coordinator of our Title I funds, but also through Francis Barnes and Anthony working with, with the principal based on the needs of the building and also looking at how are we allocating district-wide. And usually, we try and have some uniformity. We allow for individualization based on the building needs. But we also try and make sure that we're, like, we wouldn't, we wouldn't hire five deans at one school and five reading interventionists at another just because one person wanted deans and one wanted interventionists. We want to try and make sure that there's kind of a uniformity of the way that we offer things. But it is important for us to look at those, those ratios and think about that. I would also say it's interesting, and this is something that we're working on as, with our setting free special education, sometimes we've had situations where we're sending students out of some of our schools that maybe are maybe a little less needy as far as, as far as economic background of the parents, maybe a little less trauma. We're sending our Title III students sometimes out of those buildings to buildings that have greater needs, like Laura MacArthur, because they already have Title, or setting three programs. So we're looking at putting, setting three programs in more of our schools. So, I mean, it wouldn't make sense to send a student from a very, very, a much more affluent school to a school where there were kids with greater need, because it just adds to that greater need there if you're not careful. And also, it doesn't allow the student to go to their local school.
But if that number is so low and that, and that's set, setting three in that one school, then your, you know, your, the, the use of your, your monies is not as available. If you're going to have three students there and that cost is high for the equipment, the space, the staff. But if you allow them to go to the school that has a, a more abundant staff and more abundant para support. But I, I get what you're saying, too. I do like, you know, that, that theory as well.
Yeah, and I think, and Anthony, maybe you have more, more comments on that. But I think that in general.
It's both that. We're striking a balance. We are analyzing the entirety of the situation, you know, to make sure that we accomplish the goals, that we need to best place the student in a place where they're going to be successful. And we're trying to make sure that we are not placing a building, buildings in a position where they have, and continue to receive the most significant.
Yeah, I get you. I'm so glad you're looking at it, because, yeah, it's, it's, it's a, that's a really great lens to be looking at, the needs of, of what's best for buildings and balance and having the student in their home neighborhood versus another area, even though that school might, yeah, you're right. It's a, it's a great, it's a great philosophy and, and lens for you to, to reevaluate what maybe was just what we've done in the past type of thing.
That's partly through just work we do in general, and it's also probably because we've been identified by the state as a district that has just pulled out of some certain areas. So we're doing it because it's right and we're doing it because we have.
The other question, as we look at the ESER N, is our music program at Ordine East. So to me, it looks like we're not going to offer, or there's going to be a reduction in maybe that lessons that we heard so much about at the beginning of the fall, and they might choose to use their own general fund there. I mean, we might be ending the support through ESER, but that does not mean we are losing those positions.
It's moving forward through regular.
Yeah, yeah. I think you mentioned that before. You did? Thank you for that. Yeah.
Yeah, I want to make sure that's clear. We made a decision that those lesson classes will continue.
But I didn't star that one. So we, we made that decision in the, in November or October-ish. So those, you've just recorded that for us. But that is already out of your general fund money?
That is correct.
I got a question with the band teacher, though, at Ordine. That reduction, does that have to do with the new general music class that's going to be offered to seventh graders or what? You know, that seems like a huge reduction.
I think it was an extra, an extra, I don't generally recall.
Yeah. We just don't have our notes with us. We had lots of staffing conversations with each building and this one is not jumping out in terms of like, how did we end up here? Because we want to make it clear, we are supporting the arts. We're making sure that, again, our decision to make sure the lesson classes are provided and available shows our commitment to make sure that, that schools are supported. So we are quickly trying to sit, figure out like, what was the reason, what was the reason for this?
If I remember correctly, those were the, they were either a person or overloads that were teaching those, those extra classes for kids. And that now, rather than taking it out of ESER funding, we've just put it back into the general allocation in the school. So it's seen as, it's seen as a basic service now rather than an ESER.
So, so when you say ESER keep, a lot of those are in the general fund. Is that right?
Well, ESER keep means that they'll be here next year.
On ESER funds?
Yes, through June of 24.
So where we have FTE added back with new funding sources, those would be ones that we said, hey, these were ESER.
So we're moving together.
So I would ask the board if there are things like this as you do further reviewing of the documents. If there are questions, we can make sure that we are ready for those questions at the next board meeting.
Yeah.
Nice job.
Yeah, excellent.
Nice job.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All the awesome support. And I want to thank you. I just, note of interest, student activity accounts. Remember how a year ago I had to move those out of their SFO checkbook and put it into Skyward? There was Fund One and then there's Fund 79, which is like your fundraising accounts. Those are, all have to go to MDE. They're crosswalked to Fund One. So all of those are reflected in Fund One. Last year, you had a Fund 79 budget and revenue, which is, was balanced to zero. So I'm not doing, I didn't do that for FY '24 because those, those numbers are all reflected in Fund One. So I just wanted to let you know, all student activities are crosswalked to Fund One now. And that was the purpose why MDE wanted us to move everything out of a, a third-party software and now putting it into Skyward. So to review, I will, I'm going to do another deep dive, but I think we've hit every point here and every revenue and expenditures. I'll present it to the HR finance meeting on June 13. Two days later, on the 15th, we have Baird coming up. I emailed them our five-year projection today and they will come and we will show you what the next five years look like. And then board approval for adopt the budget at the school board meeting, that must be the 20th, June 20th.
I think it's 22.
Okay? Thank you very much. If you have any other questions, please feel free to reach out.
So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I just wanted to.